Good evening and thank you for watching the August 6th edition, I guess, of the Board of Selectmen in Foxborough. Tonight's agenda is relatively pretty long and extensive. Citizens input at 7:00 PM. 7:05 Sandra Herman, the Board of Selectmen with a presentation. 7:15 Chairman Sullivan's update. 7:20 Stephanie Champagne, change of manager of Foxborough Country Club. 7:30 NRRC with a NPDES permit. 8:00 PM Roger Hill Planning Board, speed limit on Pace and Road. 8:15 Andy Felix and Richard Tuzo, parking agreement between Tree Tech and the Foxborough Sports Center. 8:25 Board of Selectmen, discussion on satellite parking. 8:40 PM Board of Selectmen, discussion on title of selectmen. 8:50 PM Board of Selectmen, discussion on digital billboards. 9:00 PM Dan Murphy Gillette Stadium on alcohol protocol. And at 9:10 executive session to conduct strategic session, strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining session or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, town manager contract. And then at 8:40 PM we're going to come back in the regular session and the Board of Selectmen with the town manager's contract. At 10:00 PM executive session again, and that would be for firefighters' union grievance, fire chief contract, Robert Culler interim town manager contract. Okay? And Joe, would you read us in the pledge, please?
Yep, I'm ready. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody here for citizens input tonight? Ladies first.
I'm Rebecca Center from Baker Street. And I watch this every time you're on, at home. And I have been concerned about what I have seen, about the problems on Oak Street and on North Street. So I decided to take a ride around town and see what were the miles per hour that people should be traveling on some of our roads. I went to South Street. As you turn South Street, it's 30. It's 35 down on Mill Street. Co-Cassett, it's 30, but on Porter's Corner, it goes down to 25. Mechanic Street uptown, it's 30 and it changes to 35. North Street going over the hill is 35. And you all know, and so do I know, what goes on once you start down North Street in that little hill. There was a problem with Pace and Road and those people, there's none on Pace and Road. So I guess you can go as fast as you want. Baker Street is 30, both ends. And you know I live on Baker Street and I'm here to tell you that there are very few people who go 30. Now, I complained and the police chief told me that I would be the one that was caught because I complained. So I'm telling you, I'm very careful on Baker Street. I drove on Chestnut Street, there's only one, and it's 30 miles per hour by the cemetery. Oak Street is very interesting. On Mechanic Street, when you turn onto Oak Street, and I rode twice because I couldn't believe it, there are no signs. You can go as fast as you want if you turn from Mechanic. Co-Cassett does have one sign in back of a tree that says 35. Now, we know that Central and Main Street are state roads. Central is 20 by the stores and 30, and Main is 35. Now, it seems to me that we could somehow get some system. And I know that previously there was a machine at the town garage that took, that made signs. And maybe we can get some signs where all our streets going out of the common are the same. It might help the police because they might have something to back them up also. I'm just throwing this out to you because it really bothers me that everything is so disrupted and you can't say, "Oh, it's 35 miles an hour." Well, it isn't everywhere. And I just want you and perhaps the highway people and the police can do something to put up some new signs and help the police to stop our crazy traffic. Now, they come down Railroad Avenue in the middle of the night, Oak Street's complaining. They turn on Glenwood Avenue and right underneath my window, this 18-wheeler can't get around the corner. He backs up and goes forward four or five times and finally leaves. I don't appreciate that at night either. Just a suggestion.
Okay, thank you Rebecca. Roger?
I came tonight just to let the board know that the committee you appointed for the deciding on the common fence, we did our work. We found the funds. They were funds that were left over at the end of fiscal year 13 in the highway budget. And we voted to go ahead and move forward with the fence and the stone posts. And yesterday the CIP voted to support that. So today I ordered the castings and the stone posts and in about eight to 10 weeks we will have them. And that's about the right time because we want some cold weather to be able to shrink fit those in place. But I just want to let the board know it's done.
Okay, thank you. Sandra?
I'd just like to take a few minutes of the board's time. We've been very fortunate over the years to have a great minute taker, not only for the Board of Selectmen, but also for advisory. Pauline, don't, don't, don't do that. I'm going to try to get through this.
Don't look at her.
I know, I know, I can't, pink hair and all. Pauline, I've always told you that when I grew up, I wanted to be just like you. And you know, you know I was talking about the courage to have pink hair, but in the past year, you've really taught me what courage is all about. I've watched you for the past year fight your fight. Never, never, once with a word of complaint, always with a smile on your face. You truly have taught me what dignity and courage and faith are about. And I'm grateful that you're a part of my life. I'm grateful that you were, you know, an employee here with the town for so many years and that you brought crazy socks and crazy earrings and, you know, Halloween hair and hats. And you've made us laugh, you've brought us joy, and you've always, always been the ultimate professional. And as my daughter says to me all the time, "That woman has such style." And tonight, I know that John would like to say a few words. And again, thank you for all you've done for us in the town of Foxborough. We truly are grateful. Thank you.
Pauline, this is an official citation from the Board of Selectmen of the town of Foxborough to you, and I'll read it. This certificate is awarded as a token of our appreciation and recognition for your years of exemplary work providing secretarial services for the Foxborough Board of Selectmen and the Foxborough Advisory Committee. You've attended countless meetings and have spent many hours with the many boards over the years and have always been professional and cheerful. As a member of the Foxborough Cultural Council from 2006 to 2012, you donated your time to ensure that the arts in Foxborough continue and thrive. You've been described as witty and generous by all who have been fortunate enough to work beside you. Your unique styles, pink hair, bold socks, witch's hat, crazy earrings have all made you one of a kind. And I'll add a real class act. On behalf of the citizens of this community, we would like to thank you for your many years of service and your commitment to the town of Foxborough. As you begin this next chapter in your life, may you have health, happiness, and many sun-filled days with your children and grandchildren and great-grandchildren. Words cannot express our collective appreciation for a job well done. This citation is given under the seal of the town of Foxborough on the sixth day of August 2013. And as someone who, you actually lived with me for close to eight years on AdCom, and I really, really appreciate all that you've done. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Oh my goodness, I'm overwhelmed. Thank you.
Mark, could I?
Absolutely.
I just want to talk a little bit about Pauline and the AdCom. So I'm probably the only AdCom chairman who had the experience of being chairman for a year with Pauline at my side and being chair for a year without Pauline at my side. And I can tell you, it's despite the fact that we had a wonderful, talented person doing the minutes for us this year, you were tremendously missed by me personally and I know by a lot of other people. When I was first chairman, Pauline had a lot more experience than I did. I knew nothing when I was first chairman, back in the 90s. And I really leaned on Pauline. Pauline had so much experience, I could ask her advice, and we became really good friends during that period of time. And I was really disappointed that she wasn't able to be there last year. But it's good to see that you're doing well. We were all very worried about you. And going forward, I can tell you, you will be greatly, greatly missed by the AdCom and by just everyone in town government who knows you. We really appreciate all that you've done for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh my goodness, I'm just overwhelmed.
They're just scratch tickets, you know?
They're all losers.
How are you doing, Pauline?
I'm doing very well, thank you to Dana Barber. It's just, you know, everything is just going just the way it's supposed to and I'm feeling well. And I'm enjoying my retirement, I really am, so. Thank you so much. I enjoyed all the time I had here, so that's a lot.
It's a great hospital, it really is, full of great people that care, so.
Thank you very much. I love the town of Foxborough, I really do, so.
So Pauline, since I won't be able to see your earrings now, you're going to have to call me and tell me what holiday it is, okay?
Maybe she's got some Grinch earrings.
Hey.
Jenny?
I knew Pauline beginning on the advisory committee, officially met her on the advisory committee, and it was a great pleasure. And she always had those one-liners, every so often she would, you know, say something appropriate and funny, witty and, but thank you for everything that you've done. You were, you were the steadiness on the advisory committee and we really appreciate that.
I loved it. I loved everything that I did.
Thank you.
And I had the opportunity to work with Pauline for a number of years on the AdCom and on Selectmen, and it's been a pleasure and utmost professionalism and made our work that much easier. And I, I don't know if many people know, I'm colorblind and I had no idea your hair was pink until tonight. It's honest to God truth. Wow, it's a lot of courage.
Oh yeah.
And I'm 23.
I said colorblind.
Wow.
Years ago when you came to advisory, she came with plain hair, it wasn't pink, until recent years. I don't know what you people did to her.
Sir, if you're going to speak, you have to go to the microphone. But this is exactly what Pauline brought to the different departments. It was her wit and she could, when you came in and you were under a little tension, she'd sit there and she'd look at you and she'd make you smile and remember what you were here for. And she, you know, she was really good to have sitting there. When I was clerk, she was always nudging me, always, you know, "Mark, what did you say? Would you speak up?" You know? Always had something to say, something witty. And the next day, she'd always call me if there was something she wasn't sure on and always been a pleasure. And I'm glad, I'm so glad to see you're doing so well.
Thank you so very much.
Unfortunately, we're going to have to move on now, I guess. So are you going to stay and watch?
Oh, for a little while, yes.
Take some notes?
My chauffeur is here, so.
Okay. All right, anybody else from citizens input? Jack Orthollet, I almost forgot you, Jack.
Jack Orthollet, town historian. You're a tough act to follow, Pauline, and I won't even mention hair. I certainly want to thank everybody who helped us over the hump on the sections for the common fence and Roger and finance and everybody's effort. And soon we'll have Dave Lila-Birdie and the guys from Tree and Park up there working away, and it's going to be a joyous day. But what brought me here tonight was the program that we're going to set up to recognize Pete Turner's more than 50 years of service to the town of Foxborough. So we will be back here three weeks from tonight on the 27th at 5:30 in the evening and unveil the plaque to Pete and have some things to say about him. The 5:30, we want to accommodate Pete and all of his family members, and that includes grandkids and great-grandchildren. And once we have our program, we'll go down the hall and hang the plaque by the inspection department. And next to the plaque will be a copy of Foxborough's building permit number one that Pete signed when he came into work. So hopefully we can all be back here three weeks from tonight. Thank you very much.
Jack, is the original one at the?
In the town archives, yep.
Great, I appreciate that. So I guess that's a formal invitation to the board and the rest of the town?
Right.
27th at 5:30?
27th at 5:30.
Okay, great. And you'll follow that up with an email, right?
Oh yes, right, right. There'll be something in the paper, but I just want to give you, you know, a heads-up and a little lead time in your planning.
Okay, great, thank you, Jack.
Yep, thank you so much.
Okay. Okay, as far as chairman's update, it's nothing very big. Me and James DeVellis met with Dan Murphy from the stadium today as did acting town manager Bob Cutler later on that day to talk about future growth and different entertainments that might want to come into the Patriots Place area. So in the upcoming weeks, we'll be talking about that in a meeting here. So just, that's pretty much all I have for that. So moving on, we have at 7:20 Stephanie, are you here?
Steven.
Steven, I'm sorry.
I'm Champagne.
Steve.
Good evening.
The glasses. Okay, Steve, you can come up here and sit down.
Okay.
John?
Given that Steve is the manager of the Foxborough Country Club and given that I'm a member of the country club, this discussion will take place without my input and my vote, so just to recuse myself from the discussion, thanks.
Steve, I apologize that again because that's how I spell my name, Steven, too, and I just didn't pick up on it. I guess it's just a rush of the moment. So would you like to tell us what this is all about?
We, our prior bar manager, Joanne, we met, left after 24, well, she's still employed, but she is planning on retiring fully after 24 years as bar manager. So we would like to switch the liquor license from her into my name.
Pretty simple, 24 years.
24 years.
And as far as, there's never been any situation at all at Foxborough?
She's the Pauline of Foxborough Country Club.
Oh, take a motion then. Any questions, Lauren?
No, I'm all set, thanks.
Jenny?
Yeah, I'm set.
James?
That's complete.
I saw none either, so I'll entertain a motion.
So I move that we approve the change of manager at the Foxborough Country Club to Steven Champagne.
Second.
More discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four, four, one abstaining?
Four zero one.
Four zero one? We got it. Is that easy?
Thank you.
All you had to do was mention Pauline's name.
Thank you, you are what they say.
You know, catching up, oh yeah.
Have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Anybody here representing Foxit? You're next.
We've got three of us here.
Okay, and one, everybody say just for the record your names.
Rick Lewis, 5 Monroe Street.
Kim Mellon, 1 Monroe Street.
Judy Johnson, 81 Willow Street.
I know you were in here a couple of weeks ago when you were talking about testing of the water or the sediment again, and you were going to move forward with that?
Invenzus is moving forward with a testing program. We mentioned that. We have already done one testing program. What we were actually back here tonight was that we were asking if the Board of Selectmen would be willing to sign a letter that would go to the EPA requesting them to move forward with a national pollution discharge permit that has been, oh, I'm getting it, that has been absent and has not been issued for the last, I should have those.
Expired in 1996.
1996, and they haven't renewed it since then. They've come up with two renewal packages and had public involvement and solicited comments and got comments, and then they've just, you know, basically put it on ice and not gone forward with it. So under the Clean Water Act, there is a provision that you can send in a letter and just put them on notice that, you know, as the town would like to see that they are being protective and doing, really doing their job, so. And then also, we were going to have the letter copied to our legislators as well as Jenny mentioned, sending that on to the legislators to put them on notice as well of our desire to move forward on this. So we wanted to get your feedback on that, if you thought that the letter was acceptable or appropriate, if you wanted to be involved with it or else we might have, you know, just another letter go in from a citizens group from, you know, in the surrounding area. And then the second topic was if there was going to be, one of the Selectmen would be willing to be on a liaison with our group going forward. Linda Walsh was the last one that we had in that position and would like, encourage having somebody involved and wanted to know if anybody had volunteered or was volunteered for that involvement, so.
Okay, we'll start with you.
Actually, I read the letter and I'm somewhat surprised that they're allowed to operate without a permit. And I imagine that the guidelines, which were established a while ago, there's no one enforcing them. And I noticed that the draft permit, I haven't seen it, but it says that it's a little bit more restrictive. But anyway, yeah, I have no problem with this letter going out under my signature, as long as we do.
Yeah, that's what we feel too, is that it's, we've heard a lot of promises from the EPA and then we were actually advised by the EPA that this is the only way to really get motion, so we appreciate your involvement.
I read the letter also, and just one question. So when this is sent, do they have any type of legal requirement, like a timeframe, to respond to you?
I didn't ask that question. I can find that out.
I'm just curious because it seems like it's gone on for so long, I can't, it's amazing when you read this.
Yeah, we were, we were just told that if, well, you know, even doing the, we had a Freedom of Information Act to get this information, so we'd have all of our facts straight. And they said even requesting that got people, you know, opening up their eyes and saying, "Oh, okay, maybe we do need to move forward on this." So, you know, I don't think they're going to sit on this a real long time, but I don't know if there's, you know, if they have a 30, 60, or 90-day obligation to respond. I don't know, yeah. I'm curious too, actually.
Yeah, I think the letter's, well, you know, it's great and, you know, I hope that we get a response quickly for you.
That'd be great.
Thank you. Jenny, anything?
I just had one question on the last line in the first paragraph. It says, "If EPA fails to act on this request, we will consider pursuing all available legal remedies." What would, do you know what that would entail?
You can file, well, it's not really a lawsuit. It's basically, there's, under the Clean Water Act, you can file a complaint and then they've got to, then it has to go through some type of hearing to have them justify not having issued that. And what I've been told is that rarely ever happens, that they, you know, they prefer to get these things and just move them ahead and stuff. So that's kind of a veiled threat in the letter that we would, you know, take it to the next, to the next level, but, you know, we, you know, we have the discretion as to whether we pursue that or not or how we go about pursuing that, but it would be requesting that some sort of judiciary review be done and understand why that they haven't issued it.
And?
And by the way, if there is any expense with that, under the Clean Water Act, the company who brings forward that is actually reimbursed, if there are any legal fees or things of that nature.
Barbara, you, do you feel comfortable with that line remaining in the letter?
I was a little surprised by it, but I think the fact that you're addressing it to the representatives and senators, that alone should get somebody's attention.
Yep.
In fact, I wouldn't be surprised if you hear it from one of their offices and maybe they can do some follow-up for you as well. I don't know if I'd put that line in there, I was, you know, but, I mean, if this is the first letter to them and you're threatening legal action, I was a little surprised by that. But, you know, maybe it's at that point. I haven't been involved with the process and maybe it's at that point, but if it's the first letter, I was kind of surprised by that.
Well, we felt having that line in there gave it a little teeth, you know, or gave it a little, little extra push that, you know, it's, that's not a friendly inquiry, it's, you know, we would like to, we expecting some, you know, feedback or some action taken.
Yep. Like I said, I haven't been involved with it, so I don't know, you know, I've read what you brought into us, I know it's been a long frustrating process, but if you've never sent them a letter before and now you're sending them the first letter saying, "Oh, we're going to, you know, follow through with some legal action," I was just surprised by that, that's all.
Yeah, the advice we had from our legal was, this is pretty just standard language.
Okay.
They, this is not, we're not the only town that has issues like this. If you go on the website, there's about a dozen permits that are just as old as Invenzus, so this is not a unique situation. I don't want to make it out to be a unique situation, but of all the businesses in the whole state, they even have 12. It seems strange.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, to, so they have filed similar letters for other communities and stuff and they, we're just kind of going on their advice.
Okay.
Did you need another, the end of though?
Excuse me?
You have two sentences you were concerned about, that was the first? Was there another one at the end?
Oh no, there's just a typo.
Oh, there was a typo? Okay.
I'm an English major.
Spelled your name wrong.
No, so.
James, this is kind of your profession, what do you have to say?
Yeah, a couple of questions, and I've read the boxes of stuff that's been at the library and we've been working over the last couple of years a little bit. Just, I guess to distinguish who's at fault here, you've got the NIPDs, National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, application and NOI that Invenzus submitted and it's good for five years. So they did the stuff that they were supposed to do. After five years, it expires, okay? Then the process starts up again. So this has been on the EPA's table, not Invenzus.
And I hope I was clear about that. This is, this is not directed at them whatsoever.
Okay, so at the end of the five years, they reevaluate the application and if they don't act on it, it's administratively continued, I guess indefinitely. That's what I picked up from my work and just going through the EPA's website. What concerns me, I have concern over that letter. What concerns me, I have concern over that letter. If the EPA fails to act on the request, we'll consider pursuing all available legal remedies. It is a threat, it's in the first paragraph. If we keep that out, you know, we can always go back, ring their bell a second time and saying it's been thirty days. I think the second letter would be more appropriate, because when you get a threat at the first paragraph, it's kind of, you know-
Send it to council.
Yeah. I think I'd rather use that space to say, you know, if, can we set up a meeting? Can we provide you any information? Can we help you make your decision because of the urgency or something like that? The last paragraph, you actually come back and say, "Since Inventus NIPD's permit expired in ninety-six, EPA has administratively continued the provision," but then you say, "During this time, Inventus has failed to comply with the terms of the exceeding allowed pH in general coliform levels," and then you kind of put it back in black and white and saying, "Inventus is doing something wrong." What gives you the insight that Inventus, to put this, it's kind of putting it on paper that this company is doing something wrong? So, you know, if we're-
What's on file? That information was on file.
Is it because they're doing something wrong, because the rules changed after five years, and they're allowed to do stuff that they weren't in the previous five years, but it hasn't caught up to them? What I'm concerned about is this is going to certainly get over to Inventus, and you're putting an accusation against the company that may or may not be true, but where do you get the information that they've?
It's, this information came right out of the EPA files.
After the, so it was, I guess, did this happen during the permit or during the administrative approval afterwards, because things changed?
Afterwards. I mean, it's, it's the, this, the data that they, we, they reviewed in the EPA files indicated that the levels that they were, they have continued to submit some samples.
Even after the permit expired?
Even after the permit expired, they continued to send some samples in, and those samples indicated that they weren't meeting the original permit conditions.
You might just word it to say that, so that it's not indicating that they're currently doing something wrong, that-
Well, but they are. I mean, the, their discharge doesn't meet the, the NIPD's permit that they had back in nineties, in the nineties.
Ninety-one and ninety-five. They no longer have that permit, right? That expired, so-
Right.
I guess what Jim is trying to say is-
They've done everything that they could to move forward, EPA hasn't done it.
Right.
So, you're-
It's, is the problem really with Inventus, or is the problem with EPA? And you don't want to make allegations against Inventus if they're not doing something against a permit that they don't have, I mean-
Right, but it's also highlighting to the EPA that they, it's a company that has documented issues, and the fact that there is no permit out there is allowing them to continue to discharge water that would not meet the permit.
That's, that's the way I would say it.
Yeah.
So, that you're not putting the blame on Inventus, because there's nothing to say
that they can't do that.
Okay.
So, that's, that was your point, Jim, right?
Yeah, it just, I think it just-
Okay. No, that makes sense. We can, we can retool that paragraph to make that point.
Yeah, because all the other stuff about the five years and the ninety-one and ninety-five and ninety-six, and-
Yeah.
That is per regulatory, and that, we can understand that, but we don't have any data, other than going back to the books, and we're not scientists, and we're taking your word, so that's where it gets a little gray.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's the only comments I had.
So, we'd like them to revise the letter, James, and then come back to the board for a quick five-minute visit, and you can have it in our next packet.
Okay.
That way you can just come back, and everybody will have, if they have any concerns, they can be emailed to us.
Mm-hmm.
If anybody has any concerns, and obviously Bob Cutler, they can, you know, send something back. If they don't, then just come forward with that letter to the next meeting.
Do you want to see a red lane strikeout, or do you just want to just revise and-
I think it's short enough just to revise it, and I would suggest they don't have to come to the next meeting. It could be administrative through Bob, as long as we're doing it.
If you want to run it through me, we can work on the line.
Sure.
Yeah, I think you know what the concerns are, and-
And then when Bob has it, he'll put it in our package for me to sign. Is the board going to vote for me to sign? Does the whole board want to sign?
It says Board of Selectmen, or you could say Chairman.
Okay.
I mean, maybe if the whole, do what we do with the other letters, have all the names on it, we can come in off hours and sign it.
Okay. So, then you want to make the motion, James, if you figure this all out?
Sure. Well, I'll make a motion to draft a letter to Curtis Spalding at the Regional Administration EPA New England Office, within the context of this letter with those two changes, addressing the attorney's sentence at the beginning and the failed compliance issue.
More discussion? All's favor? All right. All for it? All right, great, and a liaison?
Yes.
Okay.
Should I talk about this?
Oh, yeah, oh, yes, yeah.
I went on the, I went on the website today before I came, you know, back before the dam was constructed, there was a subcommittee that was created by the selectmen, the Nippon Reservoir Committee. It's out of date now, and I didn't know if you wanted to make a motion to dismantle it at this point.
Well, it would have to be on the agenda to dismantle it, right?
It's a committee?
Yes, it's called the Nippon Reservoir Committee. It's, it's, you know, it's on our website, it's under boards and committees.
Bob Dickey's name on that?
Bob was on it originally. He is not on it now. It says Carol Gorman is, is on it, and Paul Mullins. Now, the NRRC link, this group's link, is on the community links, which is appropriate. So, this committee really is not-
That was the original committee?
This was the original committee, yeah.
That was a long process.
Twenty years ago.
Twenty years ago, yeah.
Yeah, well-
So, the committee's not meeting currently, is that the deal?
So, Bob, we put that as an action item. If you can give that information to Bob, we'll put it as an action item, just ban that committee next meeting?
Yeah, perhaps, yeah, have it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay.
You can check the website out. It was under boards and committees.
Yep.
Well, you can give a copy of that to him, he will-
I can find that.
All right.
And maybe the fact that, I mean, you appoint them, you sign the cards and take the oath, and it gets extended.
Three years.
So, maybe by default, it just fell along the wayside with nobody being reappointed over the years.
Well, there was the actual settlement at the time, back when I first was on the board, and that's when the committee should have been dissolved, right then and there, back in two thousand and five.
And it actually may be, and that's just on the website, so we'll figure that out, and if it's just on the website, we'll remove that, and otherwise we'll have an action item for-
Yeah. Paul Mullins is still active on our committee.
Okay.
But- And liaison? Anybody jumping to be involved with the reservoir?
Do you do mail?
Which one? The one you said Paul did, that's what you want to do.
Oh, John, you'll?
I was away all weekend, so it's been busy.
Oh, good. John, you'll do it?
I'll do it.
Oh, that'd be great. Okay.
So, I'll send you my-
I think it's spelled cadmium.
CD. Okay, we'll, we'll cop you as to when we're meeting next, and in fact, Thursday this week, if you want to go on a boat cruise, there, Sheila Warner's going to take the group out just to look at the weed treatment and stuff at seven o'clock at her house.
Have you ever been on the lake?
I have.
It's beautiful.
I've been in the lake.
Oh. That's what's wrong.
You can stand up in the middle. Yeah, just send me an email of the time and the place, and I'll meet up with you.
That'd be great.
I appreciate it.
Look forward to it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right, so you'll go right to Bob Cutler on that revised letter.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's not eight o'clock, but can we, Pace and Row, I see everybody here, can we get started with that?
Do you want to do it yet?
Yeah?
Yeah, there are more folks coming, but-
By the time we kick it in gear, I think they'll walk in the door. And Roger, are you coming forward, or are you sitting in the shadows? You pull up another chair, it's fine.
I'll go this way.
No, we can get this going. They already got, I think everybody's well informed on this whole situation.
I won't give this out to you again, but if you are, I'll be able to-
I'd like, if I may, Mr. Chairman, to just summarize a starting point as to where we are.
Right, appreciate it. First, we have to go through all the names to record.
Oh, sure.
Throwing me off my game plan.
And address?
Yes.
Matt Monahan, forty-four Pace and Row.
Roger Hill, nineteen Park Avenue.
Gordon Green Villa Drive.
Mike Casey, forty, Pace and Row.
Liv Ewing, thirty-five North Street.
Great, thank you. Now- I wanted to start off just by giving a little bit of background and reminding everybody that this discussion was originated by the area residents at a recent Board of Selectmen meeting. The planning board has a strong interest in Pace and Green, Chestnut Green project, which for among other, yeah, let's start again, which among other things, we intended to be a family-friendly area for all ages. It's a major recreation area, a walking neighborhood with walks throughout, including a connection walkway from high lawn farms down to the rec fields. Sharon Watson, Bill Greeter, and I met with the group of residents, along with Lorraine and Ginny, to review the issues and possible solutions. Then Bill and I met with Roger Hill and Chief Hatfield to review what we could do. Our efforts have been guided by the desire to find a solution that will provide pedestrian and vehicular safety that can be tested here, and if successful, can be applied to other areas of the town, as applicable depending on what their traffic and volumes and types are and the pedestrian activity. We think that this is a good place to run some tests and see how well we can do. The neighbors have done a lot of research on traffic calming measures that have been implemented in other communities, and we've heard from them in our discussions. And after we met with the neighbors, Bill Greeter and I met with Chief Hatfield and DPW Director Hill to get recommendations and concerns. Chief Hatfield wants to ensure that measures implemented would provide adequate width for safety equipment, would not slow his emergency responses, and not cause degradation or damage to emergency vehicles. He stated that measures proposed that we've been discussing satisfy all of his concerns. DPW Director Hill wants to ensure that measures implemented would meet acceptable traffic design standards, were maintainable, and would not impede snow removal. We believe that what we have been talking about does in fact meet those criteria, and I'll pass out, if I may, at this point, we'll use yours from before.
It's the same one, right?
It's, it's just a few shorter, we moved a couple of streets. The proposal before you, and I believe it has agreement, and there's some wrinkles here and there, is to recognize that North Street is a high-speed, a higher speed road that carries a lot of commercial traffic, trucking, that has to be considered. Pace and Road is a slower road, which is close, or should be a slower road, which is closer to the recreation fields. Now, the blue and red dots showing places that it's recommended that traffic calming be installed are the blue dots and where traffic crosswalks are.
Just one quick point, some of these, the red dots, it says traffic calming.
Guess what? I was, I was late tonight trying to split this, and I realized I hadn't put the code on, and when I took out the back pages, I didn't have it, so the blue dots are traffic calming, the red dots are the crosswalk, and I apologize for my screw-up. Okay.
Simple mistake.
Okay. One of the things that was very important, and several of the people, the residents that did this background, a lot of work in other towns, found that traffic calming tables, which are longer, as long as they have a gradual slope, are fine with the fire trucks, and that we have confirmed with Chief Hatfield, and we feel that they could be used and tested here as we approach from the north, from the roundabout on North Street, before we get to Lutton Lane, and as we come from Chestnut Street towards the rec fields just before we get there, to try to slow people down, and then to use identification at the crosswalks to make everybody know that this is it, there's a little raised with a big sign in the middle of the road that says, basically, the kids have the right of way, if they're in the crosswalk, you've got to stop for them. And then the possibility of using something similar to what was identified, Bill Greeter found, pointed it out from Chestnut, from Patriot Place, they used some mini bumps. Not, they're not bumps, because everybody, most everybody agrees they don't want speed bumps. Chief Hatfield was very strong about, he didn't want his equipment being all shaken apart, but a speed cushion or a speed hump is one that is smaller, less, it only goes up three inches instead of five inches. They have used several of them on the intermediate road at Patriot Place quite successfully, although they have said they feel that they do want to go back and paint them to make them more identifiable. And I'll tell you that when I've been up there and photographed cars going through it, I see the brake lights go on, so I do know that people do slow down when they're going over them, and so, on a road like Pace and, which the speed limit should be lower than on North Street, I think it might be worth giving that a try there. So, one of the thoughts that we had during the various discussions, if we got two calming tables heading north, the activities at the crosswalks, the sign that's slightly raised three inches, and only about two foot by three foot, just enough so people can see it, and then maybe on Pace and Road, where the traffic is supposed to be slower, and because of the right-hand turn they have to make coming from North Street onto Pace and Road, we could try one of the smaller humps to see how they would work. And again, in our discussions with Roger behind us and with the chief, I think there's a good possibility, everybody is agreeable with it, and that Roger thought one additional wrinkle might be, he's got a grooving machine, and he thought it might be interesting to cut some of these rumble strips under the top of the platform. It doesn't hurt any of the equipment, but it might just be a little added, and I think it might be a damn good idea. So, those are the introductory comments. Let's throw it open.
Jimmy, anything?
No, I've been following it, and a lot of people worked a lot of hours to get to this point. There was a gap, certainly, when I pulled the housing, the original plan, stock, and it seems like it's come full circle. And from what I see, this is, addresses it in a way that we can do it, see how it works, and if it works great, we may be adapted to other parts of town, but at least this is a very reasonable approach to that, to that new neighborhood.
Ginny?
Well, we were all sent a sort of unofficial memo on the things that were discussed between Roger Hatfield, Roger Hill, and the planning board, and I don't know, Roger, did you get, did you get this memo that Bill Greeter sent out?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I mean, everybody's on the same page of what was spoken about, was agreed to?
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
John?
Given that this seems to be a reasonable plan, everyone's agreeing that to go forward, how do we go forward? What's, what's the process to get these built?
We've already ordered the signage.
You have?
Yeah. I probably won't get the speed plateaus in until September. Part of the reason is our crews are working together on Chestnut Street with the water, and I've got to get those services transferred between the-
So, the speed plateaus that you're going to get are removable?
No. They're permanent.
Okay.
They're the same, I like the ones at Patriot Place, too. I think those are really good. They don't, you know, they don't damage the vehicles, but if you stay there and watch, the cars slow down for them, so I would paint them yellow. A few other things we've already planned to do on North Street. We have four major crosswalks on North Street. We're going to strike them both ways, like the ones on the Common. We're going to put back the slow signs and the bubbles, and screw them down to the pavement so they can't be taken away, and we're going to put the small signs like we have at the Common at every crosswalk that read from both sides that pedestrians have the right of way and cars have to stop. And that's on North Street. I'll probably put a- that's on North Street. I'll probably put a couple of them on Payson Road, too. But I went down to Payson Road, did, followed what you guys did with the radar, and I said that there's, there's no way that I could put anything but advisory speed plates down there, because if I did a speed study, it would be forty-two, forty-three miles an hour for the eighty-fifth percentile speed. North Street would be even worse, so.
Highway.
But, you know, the Uniform Speed Law and typically settled, and we can put those signs up. But we don't want to put any signs up that are unenforceable, so.
And Roger, two other things. One is, this is coming out of an existing budget?
Yeah.
And just roughly, just to do this, roughly what?
Short money. It's under, I think it's under ten grand for everything.
Under $10,000?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we do the work ourselves, yeah.
Roger, did, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Jim.
Did you look at the lighting when you're putting the crosswalks up? Is it under an existing light, or, you know, I think what's happened in the past, you put one here, and it would have made more sense to put it there because it was a pole with the light on it?
The crosswalks, actually, the location of the crosswalks was predetermined before we did any of that. The exits to the new subdivision have, they already have the crosswalks in place.
So all four of these, the two on Payson and the two on North Street, or?
They're predetermined, yeah.
Crosswalks predetermined, okay.
Yep. And I'm just going to stripe, the ones on North Street are not striped yet, and I'm going to do that. And that should be before the end of August, that we should get those in.
That's great.
Because I've got, I haven't told the Selectmen about it, but I finally got the state to approve a stack lane for the left turn into the charter school. And all I have to do is grind out the existing thermoplastic and apply new stripes to do the stack lane. And it's a 400-foot stack lane, so we're going to control 20 cars with it. But that's when the stripes will be done, right after I get the stack lane stripes done. I want to try to beat school opening with those, that's all.
Jim, I do think there is one light on Payson Road that does need to be shifted from one pole to another to be more compatible with the crosswalk.
We can make that happen. It might take National Grid a little while to do it.
Yeah, it's just the concern is when you have a country road, and cars aren't familiar, they don't expect a crosswalk. And if people use it all the time, they expect a car to stop, so they step out so that the light is a definite.
Are you okay with these locations of the actual speed tables?
Yeah, yeah.
In terms of water?
Yeah, they may slide them a little bit here and there just to get them off to a very decent grade. Pretty much in agreement with them.
Can I ask a question about the ta- are the tables going to be similar to the tables like the top picture that we're thinking about, or?
No, I like the ones at Patriot Place. They're going to be just like those, but what I want to do is, I may, I'm going to measure them up first, and I may, may just change the geometry just a little bit horizontally, not on the vertical. I'll go with the vertical.
Grooves aren't good, too.
I was in Westfield, going through Westfield this weekend, and they had painted crosswalks like we do in this area. And then they had elevated painted crosswalks, and you couldn't tell the difference. And at 20 miles an hour, I'm not kidding, it set my, up in the air. So, I mean, and it was a 30-mile-old zone. It was just, don't do what they did in Westfield, is my point. It was horrible. And I thought of you guys right off the bat, because they've been working on the center of Westfield, I don't know if you know, for like five years, and they finally finished it. And you cannot distinguish the red from the elevated and the unelevated crosswalks. And it, I wasn't the only one having a problem. UPS guy next to me hit it, too. You can't see it. So I would want a lot of identification that this is coming up, because it could be a bigger hazard if somebody doesn't see it and knows it. Next thing you're going to airborne.
The good news, Holly, is that the median signs that are going to put in are that real high reflective green, and they got the legend right on them that says that you have to stop if there's a pedestrian on the crosswalk. And you can see them from a thousand feet away at night. They're very visible.
So you can have a seat, sir, if you want. Now, you know, I'm catching you, you want to do it all at once, or just try a couple on Payson first? I'm just trying to make sure.
Well, I'm going to do the plateaus on Payson.
Right. And what about the crosswalks on Payson?
And the crosswalks I'll do as soon as I get the strippers in.
Okay. And then you're going to test the plateaus on Payson, and then maybe?
I don't know if, I don't know if we'll be able to do it on North Street or not.
It's too high-speed, though?
I want to, first, I want to put all the other implementation on North Street and see what happens. And since we have the speed plateaus on Payson, if they work out okay, we'll look at that.
Well, in view of the fact we have the trucks on North Street, maybe we should consider putting one, one on the northbound side on North Street, so that we get a chance to see what it would be. I mean, most of Payson is going to be automotive.
One of the good things is we get the chance to put two of them on Payson and see what happens.
Put the two there, and if we put one at the, at the end of that long straightaway coming in towards.
Just over the crest of the hill.
Just before, so that, before we get to that first crosswalk. So that, because let's face it, that the construction up there is going full bore, and at this point, we already have over 20 children living on Highland Avenue in that area. And there's going to be more before, before the fall comes. And I'd like to see at least one, if we could get just one of them, that would give us a real encouragement, and I would really think would do a lot for our safety on North Street.
Yeah, I think one of our concerns that we had is by doing it on Payson, and I hear you with the signs and some of the visual cues, but then by not doing any of the, you know, tables that we were talking about, we do have concerns, and I'm speaking on behalf of, you know, folks who are in Highland Farm as well. We're going to be pushing more traffic potentially, that's the hypothesis, from Payson onto North, right?
That's highly likely, and that's probably what you want to do anyway.
But.
Because it's much wider.
Yes, but without any mitigation, we're then going to exacerbate the issue that we have with the reckless driving and the speeds, and then the 20-plus children alone within Highland Farm. So I think.
I'll do the one at the crest, if it works.
Sure.
So if, so here's my ask, is could we then reevaluate, say, six months out after, I know it gets into winter, so it's a little different, and is the door still open that we could establish a second one, knowing that Highland Farm especially has two areas of entrance and exit, where children are at both?
I'll keep the door open for you.
Okay. So, I mean, you know, willing to compromise as long as we can continue the conversation forward?
Sure.
Because there's no chance we'll get two, huh? I just thought I'd ask.
No, I'm not going to say that, because.
Roger, we've had this situation on another town, street in town. What are we going to do there? Is any of this going to help? Would any of this help that situation?
Well, the other street is 8,400 feet long, and has two straightaways that are, one of them's over a mile, and it's 36 feet of pavement. I don't know if any of these are going to be workable up there or not.
Guaranteed.
That's the widest street in town. You know that, so, other than US 1.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? So you need a formal vote from the board to do this? I didn't think so. I sent Phil on.
I do just want to say it's been very nice working together on this. I think the whole collective team across, you know, neighborhoods, Planning Board, Roger and folks, it's been good. And I also appreciate the recognition back to the emergency vehicles. As somebody who's had, you know, Chief Hatfield's team come to our house when my son broke his arm in half, I know the, you know, importance of making sure that their equipment's working and they can respond quickly. And so I am happy, you know, that we are making progress and not jeopardizing, you know, any response times. You know, hopefully, they don't come back to any of our houses anytime soon. But it's, I think this has been a really good process, just from my standpoint.
Thank you. Okay, good luck.
Thanks, Gordon.
Thank you guys very much.
You're welcome. I don't see anybody but one person in here, so let's go to action.
Is Chief, Chief O'Larry have to get back to his safety thing at the Common? Was he here for?
Oh, my God.
He's touching on the satellite.
Yeah, he said he was going to be there and come first later.
I didn't know if he had to go back.
Ed, would you have to be somewhere?
No, I can patiently wait.
No, I mean, should we take?
Back to the event on the Common?
Do you need to get back to?
No, I had talked to J.C., chairperson, Linda Walsh, for the MS, and she's already had the demonstration by the Sergeant Chamberlain, Ms. Parker Marley. So, no, I'm fine with the boards.
Well, you know, we're going to bring you up next, because I don't see enough people here for the 815 agenda, so if you would come forward and discuss the parking. So if you want to dig for that one, ladies and gentlemen.
Parking.
It's not in this packet, right?
It's not in this packet.
It's from the old packet, right?
As I mentioned the last time before I was, before the board on this matter, starting in 2012, I worked as part of a committee in the community involving the satellite parking lot owners, people from Gillette Stadium, as well as members of the board to review the parking lot regulations that had been in effect going back to the mid-1970s. And as a result of feedback from the group at that time that we were involved in it, we didn't have it ready for when the board had actually issued their licenses last June of 2012, we decided we would attempt to do so prior to the issuance of the licenses for the fiscal period we're in. I sent out additional information to the different lot owners. With Mrs. Coppola, we had a meeting with the lot operators in general, and went through, again, the items that were on the list and some additional changes which I made. And it was sent out back to the group, and then we had our meeting at the last Selectmen's meeting, and several people had indicated they hadn't received them. I gave the printed copies that I made out for the group to Ron Young, who said he would distribute them to the group. And so now we're back before the board, and I don't know whether we have any lot owners that will be speaking on this matter or not. But certainly, I have not directly heard from any other lot owner about these regulations. Yes.
Explain the difference between the regulations from former and now the new?
Well, as a result of the meeting, I went back, and it says revised draft of July 16th, 2013. There are a variety of minor changes. Some of them are underlined in the document in terms of the wording that was added. We also realigned many of the things concerning the licensing that was further back in the document and moved them forward, because it made more sense as a collective document to read items that were added by previous boards to the original regulations, even prior to my becoming chief. So we put them in the front part of the document, and then we renumbered the document to match the new alignment.
Well, I understand that. I was trying to get you to educate the people at home that can't see this information. Ginny, you were on top of this the whole way through, so what do you think?
Yeah, we, like Chief O'Larry said, we, we had a meeting with the satellite parking owners, and we, they went through the regulations, and there were some things which means like lots have to be cleaned now. It used to be 48 hours, now it's within 24 hours, and, you know, you know, the, all the, all the lots will open at the same time, you know, things like that, that the lot owners had agreed to. The question I had was, which is the newly numbered 10A, was sufficient police officers shall be assigned to the bus parking area to provide safety. And originally, that was two police officers would be assigned. But Chief O'Larry explained that the reason, this gives him a little more flexibility in how many offices to be assigned. So I had no problem with that explanation. And then there was a newly numbered 14 is the scheduled parking fees that is charged at each parking lot is to be submitted to the Board of Selectmen by July 1st of each year. Well, different events cause for different parking, and the parking lot owners just said it's, you know, they don't have just one set of fees that they charge. It's just depending on the event. So it was just too cumbersome, so they dropped, decided to drop that, and no one had a problem, no one had a problem with that. So basically, everyone worked together and we kind of, I think they're pretty good relation, regulations, you know.
Sure.
What, but what I think has, and one of the few extra things came out of it, and one of the concerns was on North Street on events at Gillette Stadium, taxis are parking there, waiting for people to come to be picked up, and also limos. And that was something that was presented as a concern by not only the parking lot owners, but some, some citizens. So, so I think that's going to have to be addressed, and I don't know whether it will be addressed in the parking regulations, or just addressed in some other way.
Well, I think it has to be addressed by enforcement of the bylaw that was enacted. I did have a conversation with several residents as a result of one of the concerts. I purchased new signage to be placed up in the area of North Street adjacent to Walpole's Water Street, because they've changed the wording of the signs, not just no parking, but no parking or standing. And we'll have those in place prior to the preseason game that we have on the 16th of August. And I know that it's unfortunate that there were some people that were operating some pay lots during one of the shows, and I'll take care of that through enforcement as well.
That was presented in an email, and what I asked is, could you send a letter to all the people in that area of North Street, just reminding them that there is a, there is a bylaw, there will be enforcement, and it's, you know, just fair warning that it, the bylaw will be enforced?
Well, it's not just that area, though. It's a broader area than that.
Well, the bylaw covers the whole town.
Right.
But this particular area is where it's egregiously being flaunted.
I don't know if a letter's, I mean, I understand your point, Ginny, but I don't know if a letter's going to just aggravate the situation. Or, I mean, they all know. I don't know if we really need to remind them anymore.
But then, now they'll know that we know.
I think they know we know, but whatever you guys want to do. I mean, I just don't think there's need to poke the tiger at this point, just with the season starting. I think they understand the enforcement will be there.
Right. There's going to be enforcement, and hopefully, rather than having a growing problem amongst the residents there, if they see specific enforcement action that takes place, it should reduce that. It is more difficult when we try and have pickup points that have been created by culture and time, as well as taxi firms that are taking clients from the hotels that have chartered them, for lack of a better word, and then having an adequate parking spot, because we can't put them out onto Route 1 to drop off. The state police want to keep the traffic flow going until you're in the lot, and at the same time, we don't want people going up onto Route 1 when we're trying to exit out 20,000 cars around the stadium, both north and south. So it's going to be a continuing thing that we'll try and monitor to reduce the impact for the residents where this is taking place.
Anything else, Ginny?
No.
And thank you for all the work you did with that. The board appreciates it. James, anything to add? Lorraine?
So, just a question about these drop, pickup and drop-off locations that have kind of evolved. Are there actually designated pickup and drop-off places on Route 1 itself, or is?
No, there isn't, and there never has been. As people, you know, live in town, frequently, they're dropping off their own family members or friends that come to their house. They leave their car there, and then they bring their friends up to that particular area. To a lesser extent, Pine Street down by the Lafayette House is a secondary area that people, although that's more of a tougher walk.
Yeah.
But it does happen, and again, it's developed over time. But it does happen and again, it's developed over time and is, I think, more noticeable now because more people take advantage of it.
Ashcroft North Street and that's turned into a bus taxi stand, free for all. It's not manned by anybody collecting money, but that's one area that is on your list of.
They're there and until Conrail lines the railroad track with the six-foot fence to prevent people using that as a cut through. It's going to be a continuing issue because again, if they don't go all the way to North Street, they're going to that location, private cars as well as taxis.
But a licensed, a bus, I mean, I've seen buses, taxis that are licensed, are they allowed to do that? If they get to that point, are they allowed to pull in, drop somebody off and then?
Well, once the game is in play, we don't maintain the traffic posts because we pull those people in that do the initial screening and we pull them in because we have duties within the facility itself and on the grounds. We can monitor it to see what's there. I know, in particular, I know a resident that lives across from there has reminded me several times about the traffic issues that develop at that particular location.
Everyone's coming from different directions, parking and parking up.
Blocking driveways and six of the lots get special permits every year from the planning board. So there's a lot of coordination between the chief, the board of health, the planning board and others.
All set Ginny? Lorraine? John?
I'm assuming this will go into effect immediately.
Well, upon the vote of the board, again, the only issue, I think initially would be your decision on number fourteen. Where there's a request by concerning the parking fees that they're supposed to send the board, what the parking fees are for the lots.
If we haven't agreed mutually that that would be all right to be left out, I think that's what you said Ginny.
Yeah, because they, depending on the event, it depends on.
Right, I mean, there's no consistency depending on the event on what lots charge.
Are you asking if we're okay with that being left out?
Yes, that, that's what I'd be asking to.
But where else would that be posted or known?
They post their, they post their own rates, we have no control over what the rates are. No.
But they do post the, whatever they charge, the individual lots have to post what they're charging before you go in. So you know that you're going to pay this amount to go in there.
But are they supposed to let the board know that at some point or?
Well, under the prior regulation, that has been there since I started looking at these in the eighties. But I think the reality is it's a free market economy and you might start off thinking you're going to charge fifty dollars a car and then it's a small event and you drop your prices. Or vice versa, if, you know, traffic's backed up to Medway on four ninety-five, you might decide, oh, maybe there's a chance or an opportunity for fiscal growth.
And that, they would never do it, they weren't doing it.
They weren't, they weren't doing it anyways, okay.
Any more questions? Entertainer motion, oh, sorry, anybody from satellite parking lot, anybody want to be heard? Step up to the mic, identify yourself please.
Ron Young, Lafayette House. The pricing issue, it can change as much as the weather. So I could say to you today, I'm going to charge fifty dollars for the first home game. It starts monsooning an hour before the game, you have to charge less because the further they want to walk, have to walk, the less they want to pay because of the rain. So it changes that quick and the concerts are the same thing. Like Taylor Swift, Friday night, the traffic was gridlock on Route One. We charged forty dollars. On Saturday, there was no business traffic, we charged ten dollars. Because the traffic was just flying and we knew we couldn't get anybody. So it varies that much and that short of notice. So even if we called the town hall on the week of the event, that may not be what we end up doing. And a football really goes by where they are in the standings and who they're playing. If they're not doing well, people won't attend, even if they have the tickets. Okay?
Mike, I'll say, anybody else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
All right, I'll move that the board selectmen approve the revised licensing procedure and regulations for commercial parking.
Second.
More discussion, all's in favor? Five, four, five, oh, I mean, sorry, five for it.
Will you put a date?
Right, with the board's permission, I'll remove fourteen and renumber it and then distribute it to the parking lot operators. Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, on the. Yeah, well, that's why I was going to say, I had a quick talk with acting town manager Bob Cutler about the parking arrangements between Tree Tech and the Foxborough Sports Center and there's some other issues with this, so Bob would like to speak on this right now, we, and I think it makes sense.
Thanks Mark, I've read the agreement, I don't know if you guys want to come up on that, Andy and Rich? We've had an opportunity to review your agreement and do you actually have a signed agreement in hand?
We haven't signed it yet.
Okay. Okay, you guys come and have a seat. So that was, that was the one thing, but I also noticed on the agreement that it's just a Monday through Friday thing and do you, do you not do the, your operations on Saturday?
Yep, on Saturday, we have a limited.
Okay.
Attendance, two eliminated.
Okay, but it's what I thought, you know, I'd mentioned to Mark is a, is a possible solution for the whole area and I've talked to the chief about this as well is getting a group of all of the owners in that area, Ron Bressi and all you guys coming up, meeting with me and Mark, if you wanted to assign someone from the board and just talking about all the issues up in that area. I know I mentioned to the chief that been by several times and East Belcher's been a lot of cars on each Belcher. I think Roger Hatfield mentioned to me that there were issues with vehicles getting down there during events and some of the local trucking outfits in there have had issues getting vehicles through. So we need to address East Belcher and we'd like, like to talk about Springbrook and just get everybody together and see if there's a way. I know Ron offered for you to have some of the buses park in his lot and on off hours. So if we get everybody together in one room, talk about all the issues, hash it out, maybe we can all come to an agreement and come back to the board with a plan for the entire area. So that would be my suggestion, we do that, you know, sometime end of August, beginning of September, we might be able to, you know, come up with a complete solution.
Rich, when do you expect to be up and running with the third rank? Roughly.
Roughly, hopefully right after Lambourn Day.
Okay, so we want to get this going with.
Sooner rather than later.
Soon and loud. I'm here.
I mean, bottom line is, we don't have, you know, if you went up to the, you know, past couple of weeks, we had a summer tournaments, we're in construction.
Right.
You know, we have three tournaments in three weekends and there was parking out the street. We had police detail, we had parking details, just like we talked with the planning board. You know, the problem that we're having right now is educating the people to park on the new parking lot on Springbrook. They just, they, they see it going down East Belcher Road and it's farther away from the ring, not realizing if they take a left on East Belcher, on Springbrook and then take another left, they're actually closer to the ring because there's an entrance there now.
I'm familiar with the area.
Can I just interject one thing? This, since we met here last time, it's been unprecedented situation for that area. You know, like, there's never been more courts, of course, since we were here last because of tournaments and our stuff. And it's just not a clear representation.
Construction.
And because of the construction of how it really is, it's excessively bad and that's only because of that.
And I'm not, I'm just saying.
I mean, it was six days, it was, you know, actually a Thursday, Friday, Thursday, Friday and a Friday, so five days. If you went there today, there was nothing, if you go there come September, there won't be anything up until Ju, up until high school starts in December. You know, and then that will be on a Wednesday or a Saturday, depending on who's playing.
And you're in the, all the parking won't be available at that point.
All the parking and we're hoping that with the flow, with people coming in now and they could drive around the new building and, you know, they'll realize they can park there and it's closer. But it's just been hard to educate them, I mean, it's, we put signs up, we have people out there. Even the police officers were having trouble down there. The people just wouldn't listen to them and say, go to the next lot, drop off there, it was, you know, it was a lot of.
They couldn't even figure it out, it was really, I thought the science was pretty well done and they'd still come in.
Yeah, it's, it's just, it was a unique thing, I mean, you're not, I don't, I'm not trying to make excuses here, but I just want the board to realize this isn't every day occurrence, this is.
You understand that, that's why I think Bob brought that up in our conversation. I, I just think it's, you know what, if we can get the, the discussions that are sitting here for two hours and have eighteen people talk about it, if we can sit in Bob's office and have the people that want to speak, speak, bring everything forward, then we can come back here, just like Ginny just did with all the satellite owners. The same exact thing, she went to all their meetings, got it all, they all figured it out, the chief, everybody, come here, she said, we all agree.
I have no problem with that, that's why I opened up the lot to Andy to help with that problem he was having.
There's other people that are looking forward to maybe opening up their lots to maybe the same agreement when it becomes an issue.
The planning board's concern was not only emergency access down East Belcher, if there were parking on both sides, but safety of the children.
Right, no, East Belcher is part of the whole thing.
East Belcher has to be, no parking, no parking.
I agree with that and that's why I think we should all sit, say, we're having this long debate that can just even take off. I think we should sit down. Anybody's welcome, we'll probably just have it right here at this table during, in the selected time that's available for everybody. Pan it out and come back in front of the board instead of having a two-hour discussion here tonight about it. And that was Bob's idea, I think it's a good one, I'd like to go with it. So is anybody negative on that? Okay, Bob, you got everybody's info and you will be contacted, let's be, within two weeks, let's try and get the first one kicked off and end this in three meetings, okay?
Sounds good, is East Bel, is East Belcher being paid this season?
It's on the list, won't get done until next year though.
I just went up courtesy the other day, don't even talk about East Belcher. All right, so you will be contacted by the acting town manager or his secretary and we will all meet, all right?
Okay.
Okay, eight forty, discussion on the title of selectmen and I'll let Jimmy bring this forward.
Thanks Mark, I'll try to be brief. This is something that I, kind of kicking around a few months ago and by no means did it have the urgency to put on the agenda, things slowed down a little bit, so. What I'm going to suggest are my ideas of, we're called the selectmen and obviously, we're not all men. Let me go back a little bit, when, when most of the towns, all the towns in New England started out back in the day, they didn't have selectmen, they had town meeting, vote and, and people raised their hand, all the voting members and that's how things were done. As the towns got older and, and larger, that got too onerous and they decided to appoint men, select, selected men to make some of the rules, the budgets and things like that. As the towns grew more, they needed police fire and then the selectmen started to appoint committees. So if you look over the years, or actually, if you just look at Foxborough, if you look at our town bylaws that we have. We've got a moderator, town clerk, assessors, five members of the school committee, three members of the board of health, six trustees of the public library, five members of the planning board, four members of the housing authority and the only gender-specific board is a selectmen and we're. So, so then you go further to look at all the people that we appoint in town. There's forty-five committees, boards, councils, authorities, agents, tax forces, commissions and trustees in the town. And again, out of those forty-five, there's none with, there's, there's no group that is gender-specific that have women or men in it, so the select, selectmen are the only ones. So if you go through New England, there's three hundred and fifty-odd towns and there's a couple dozen that have taken the vote to change from selectmen to a select board and if you look at what we do, we act as a board made up of selectmen and selectwomen, but together we're a board, just like the planning board, the school committee, we act as a board. Now, I've got some calls on this that said, you know, it's too politically correct, leave it as it is, there's a lot of history and that's important to towns. And so be it, I understand that and there's certain merit to that. But my feeling is eventually, it's going to become, just like as policemen have become police officers and every other board and committee in this town is gender-neutral, at some point, it's going to be select board. So it hit me last year when there was, the majority of our board were women and we're calling them selectmen, it just didn't feel right. Someone brought up, a senior citizen had brought it up to me that it's something, you know, would you consider doing that and at the time, you know, it, it was a gender issue, certainly. But it's funny, if you look at recently, the, when this came out, one of the meetings or back in May, The Globe ran an article on it and they asked a bunch of select men and women what they thought and people were pretty ambivalent, they never really thought about it, they could go either way. And I think they asked, a few of you guys in your comments are in here, but there was one woman, Victoria Budson, she, she was quoted as, she was the woman of, woman in public policy program at Harvard and she says, changing to a gender-neutral term can be a one step in a procession that helps break down the barriers to greater participation. The really important part isn't just a gender issue, it's anything we can do to encourage people to participate in a democracy that makes, makes a democracy function better. In this case, the more people running and participating in local office, the better outcome, the better outcome we're all going to have. So the fact that we're selectmen, it may be a little intimidating versus a board. If it opens up to the feeling that it's an all-inclusive and we're all-inclusive board as time changed, I wanted to throw that out to see if we had a majority of the board that would feel that way. And then I think it's a pretty simple step, I think it's, you go to our town bylaws, you, wherever it says selectmen, you change it to select board, it would probably be a vote of town meeting. But I think it would be initiated, initiated as an article sponsored by the select men or selectwomen or select board. So I thought it'd be an interesting discussion and curious to hear your thoughts on that.
Thanks Ginny, why don't we all write to the ladies?
And it's important to say, it wasn't a lady that brought this to me, I don't want to put anyone on the table. You were quoted that, you didn't like the idea.
Let's hear that quote again Ginny.
I'll read it.
I'm not going to read it, but if you can read that. Oh, okay, now I remember it. This is what, I remember the reporter from The Globe called in anticipation of this being brought up as an agenda item. And, and my quote was, to me, it's the board of selectmen, said Virginia Coppola, one of two women on the board, I have no problem with it remaining the board of selectmen, I'm a woman, but I call myself a selectman. All it is is a title, it's a convention, to me, it doesn't make a difference. And that's truly how I feel because it's, oh, I also said, it's a non, it's a non-issue as far as I'm concerned, added Coppola, who said she would probably oppose changing the name. And I do, I don't, I really don't think it's necessary. I think you should be more concerned on who you're going to vote, who you're going to, to support as a person that you want to represent on the board of selectmen than a title. I think it's just a title, it doesn't mean anything and it just so happens it's, it's, it's a selectman and I appreciate the sensitivity that, that Jim has, but I have no problem with being called a selectman.
Jim is a sensitive guy.
I know he is a sensitive man.
Oh, I've heard it.
But I, I mean, I really do, and, and then it would, if you, if you did vote to change it, you'd have to go back. But I, I, I mean, I really do, and, and, and then it would, if you, if you did vote to change it, you'd have to go back through all the bylaws and, and change it and everything. And I ju- I just don't think it's, I just don't think it's that important an issue. I mean, and if someone doesn't want to run for an office because of the title, then they really shouldn't be running for the office.
I don't think it would ever raise to that level.
You run for, you run for the office because you wanna run for the office. But I do appreciate it.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think anyone's gonna not run because they're called a selectman, but just like, you know, no one's gonna become a, a cop because it's a policeman instead of a police officer. But honestly, I think it's going in that direction eventually and I think we need to-
Someday.
Yeah, I think it'd be nice if we, we're the ones that initiated it.
I agree with Ginny. I'm fine with the way it is. I worked hard to become a selectman. I prefer to be called a selectman because that's what we are. We are the Board of Selectmen. You know, I do see people struggle with that. I wish they wouldn't. They should feel comfortable calling any member of this board a selectman. That's what it said on the signs that I posted on everybody's lawn out there. I was running for the Office of Selectmen. That's what it is. You know, jokingly, I've said, you know, if, if um, when Ginny's elected governor, I'm not gonna call her governess. You know, it's, I think, this is not gender.
Well, one of us three guys decided to change it to select board.
That'd be ironic.
That's the beauty of the, of democracy, I guess.
Oh, I've heard the lady speak. John, you weren't even-
Well, I, I actually uh read the latest edition of The Beacon today.
How boring.
And it was, but all throughout it, the word selectmen is used. And this is, this is, you know, this is our municipal magazine. And honestly, um I think the word selectman means, you know, the person who's in the position and it's, it, you know, there's some legal language where it says, if you use the word man, it really means anybody. Uh I, I take the same approach as Ginny and Lorraine, is that I think it's um, it, it, it has a little bit of history. I'm comfortable with it. I, I think to, to change it um, just for the sake of change is really a lot of effort that's unnecessary at this time. But I, I was somewhat taken by the fact that, you know, the, the folks who may be even more sensitive than Jim have elected to continue calling all boards of selectmen, boards of selectmen. And they seem to be quite comfortable with that because throughout this issue, there's gonna be the word selectmen four hundred times. So I'm, I'm good with leaving it the way it is.
Okay, so I can count votes. We'll just move on from this topic and not even vote on it.
I count the votes as well.
Alright.
Thank you for entertaining me.
It was entertaining.
It was very entertaining.
Okay, discussion on digital billboards. John, uh, that's Roger Springer. We have a letter from the chairman of the ZBA on electronic billboards. Well, I don't see him here. I'm looking for him. Is he not coming? Do you know? I didn't have a chance to reach out to him.
Mr. Forster?
Yeah. Okay.
Don't know.
I can uh say a couple of things about this. I mean, I-
John, do you want to read a little?
Cause he is looking for action, by the way.
Yeah. But I, I think everything has been withdrawn as far as digital. Am I incorrect?
August fifteenth.
August fifteenth?
Right. Uh what the letter's saying is that um there have been a number of requests for electronic billboards. And in addition, Water and Sewer is requesting to place a regular billboard or advertising on the water tower. So it's, there's a lot of um action going on basically with uh this topic. And so because of the whole master planning process that was going to also look at zoning and signage, you know, billboards, uh the use of billboards on Route One, um when these requests came forward for the electronic billboards, the planning board and Water and Sewer board, and we had submitted letters to the zoning board of appeals to uh request that they uh not take action on that until the process of going through the master planning process was completed. So what Neil is asking is that um we create a subcommittee that has a member of the board, of our board as the chairperson, uh along with a ZBA member, a member from the planning board, someone from Water and Sewer, and uh appropriate financial officer, so that we can um make some recommendations in advance of the next zoning board of appeals meeting, which is scheduled for, I'm not sure.
Fifteen, did he say?
Next Thursday.
But it is, the electronic ones have been, they're all changed to regular.
Yes, so there's no electronic, so I said, the, the, the billboards are still there, but then they're static billboards now.
Yeah, so that's three applications, well, two billboards and one water tower.
So do we need to be cons-
So now they're, excuse me, Mike.
No, she's right. I was one of the ones that had a request in and I withdrew the electronic request based on the letters that were sent. So it's my understanding that the three issues that are coming up on the fifteenth are all now static. I don't believe there's any electronic request.
So I don't know if this is in, I think, uh, I think Neil's letter got, got across to people. I see Mr. Murphy. Mr. Murphy, can you come forward, please? The, um, we're just bringing up the uh electronic billboards. Can you let us know where, where your application for that is? Electronic billboards, has that been repealed due to it was a static board?
It's been amended to a conventional board or static board.
So, and that's just in today? That's?
That was about a week ago.
Okay.
About the date of our, our hearing. I think it was last Tuesday, last Tuesday or Wednesday.
Okay, so do we still need to do this committee is my question.
I want me to uh call Neil and just confirm that we're all set then at this point.
Absolutely.
Okay, I'll do that.
That'd be great. Anybody else want to add to the conversation?
I think just, so I, I can understand it better. There's one static that's outside a district, one- S one. That used to be electronic proposal, now it's static. There's one that used to be electronic inside the district, now it's static. And then there's a third entity was the Water and Sewer, which is supposedly gonna be in a water tank that, there, there's no application yet and I don't know what that process is. So I think the zoning board in their letter said, you know, first of all, this is not our jurisdiction, so it's not, we're exerting our review policies, uh because it's outside of our jurisdiction, I think. But what the zoning board is saying is, guys, there's a lot going on here. They have the authority to do it, but they're looking to us because there's other things that are attached to these signs that have been going on for quite a while. Fifty percent share deals, um water sewer, all that stuff. They don't quite understand it all. So can we put together a group, planning board, zoning board, uh one of us, to kind of look at it? So we don't have a free-for-all fight between two private businesses and the Water and Sewer. So I, I think that's where we're at right now. Now, the fact that two of them went from electronic to static, the fact that it's three different areas and three different um financial opportunities, or maybe no financial opportunity for the town, I still think it needs somebody to look at. So if this goes back to the zoning board, they still may be in the same situation regardless of it's static or not.
Exactly. What they're looking to us for, and he actually says he's looking to the Board of Selectmen for direction and vision, um just to say we can imagine what that uh, you know, strip of Route One will look like. They can do everything legally, but I think what they're looking for is how the community wants that uh stretch of road to look.
So, glad you-
Oh, well, we've um, right now in the town of Foxborough, the electronic boards are not legal. Because there was a bylaw that was presented to a town meeting, I think it was last town meeting, and it was rejected. So right now, it's, it's illegal to have a, or it's not legal to have a, an electronic board. And I think uh what the planning board is concerned about is the development of the master plan. And I think that is also what the ZBA was concerned about is what, that, what they, they wa- they don't wanna do anything that's going to go against the master plan down the road. And I, I think that was their concern. I think maybe that was why they were looking to a, a committee to kind of figure all this out, to find out about, you know, where are we in the master plan, um how do we anticipate uh the possibility of electronic, you know, billboards and that kind of thing, how to handle it, the next application that comes in, you know?
Okay, so?
So, again, I mean, I can reach out to Neil and um confirm that this is still something that they want, that they wanna hear from us about.
Is this just for electronic billboards or is this for billboards?
Period, right.
Yeah.
But we could still take an initiative vote to approve a board member as part of a committee.
Yep.
Or you actually don't even have to vote. Somebody just volunteer to be part, to be part of that committee.
I'll do it. Unless if somebody else wants to.
Didn't you just volunteer?
No.
Oh, I thought that's what you-
He wanted to be next to speak. I got the same hint when you did that. Me, me, me. Guys like, I thought you were volunteering, but you wanted to speak now. I was gonna say, you got one tonight. Mike, you got one more thing to add?
I ju- just a point of information, Ginny. I believe that what you're referring to was for a, one specific sign that went in front of town meeting. So I don't think it's illegal. I think if we check it, it was for one specific sign that the town manager had brought forward. So just, it doesn't matter here tonight, but I think you should check on that.
But, but I thought that we, the town doesn't allow electronic billboards.
No, that you can get, I think you can still get a special permit for it.
Right, because the state passed that law this year in January or February. And what you're talking about, I believe, unless I'm wrong, that was brought up for one specific sign.
Yeah.
Not, not for the town.
Oh, okay.
So-
Mike is right. They, they changed the state law and that, that prompted these applications. So we do need to look at it. Um some, or so I think the committee is probably a good idea.
So if, if the electronic board is legal, but-
It's legal with a special permit, I believe.
Okay, but do we have, um would we, the town, have to develop uh regulations in regard to that? To, to the legal electronic board?
Quite a few things.
You know, like for size and, you know?
We, we'd have to look into that and I think that-
The way we have, the way we have regulations for regular.
Correct.
Illuminated signs.
And those have, those regulations haven't been developed yet?
Correct. And I think that's part of Sharon's idea on the master planning, is that they would make that part of that plan.
I mean, the state has regulations for setbacks and radius and how many times it can change. And certainly Route One is a mass highway. So if the town wanted to enact stricter regulations, um and, and I think, you know, it's, it may be a trend of the future. It's, it's certainly could be very lucrative. But if it's managed right and if this committee can be put together to come up with some rhyme and reason, it could do very well for the town.
Anybody, um, I'm all for Lorraine taking this ball and running with it. Anybody got anything to add? Okay, thank you, Lorraine. And you'll contact um Neil, okay?
Do we wanna put this on next meeting for a, the status from, from Lorraine?
I think better kick, kick it off for about a month. I mean, between the time you get all the boards to meet and agree to send somebody to a committee, it's gonna take more than two weeks. Would you, would you agree with that? Or you wanna add it to the next? I mean, it's your-
Why don't we let a little time go by and we can decide just before the next one?
Okay, alright, yeah, there you go. You, you can let me know.
Okay.
But you know, why don't you put a placeholder there, Bob, and put a question mark to it and we'll go from there. Okay, great. Now, Dan Murphy and some personnel from the Gillette Stadium with the Gillette Stadium alcohol protocol discussion. And if you can believe it, Dan, we're ten minutes ahead of schedule.
No, that just made it. It's great. Thank you for putting us on the agenda so late. Um, with a late request, I mean, not so late. You know, we, we were here, as you know, about five months ago and talking, and we did a lengthy presentation on uh, I think what, what was the perception versus the reality up at Patriot Place. And we wanted to talk about the COF report numbers, which was the town's consultant's numbers back when Patriot Place was being conceptualized. And then after five years of operating Patriot Place, what the true numbers were in terms of incidents with police department and fire department impacts. And the numbers that we used were actually, the actual numbers provided, they matched up perfectly with the police department and the, and the fire department. So um also with that meeting that we had five months ago, we talked about, Brian talked about um some ideas he had for um policies and, and proactive outreach that he's doing with the police department. So we just wanna come back tonight and talk about what, what programs he has put in place, how well they're working, how well they're working with the cooperation of the police department and take any questions that you may have.
Great, Brian?
Great.
I haven't seen your full name for the record, please.
Yes, it's uh Brian Early, general manager of Patriot Place. You know, thank you. As Dan said, uh when I was back with, in front of you back in March, we, we talked a lot a bit about, a lot about the five-year look back, mentioning our, our real numbers um at, at nearly full buildout in two thousand twelve versus what the COF report had projected. Uh and at that time, just to, to review quickly, we were, we were only at seventy-five percent of the projected uh incident levels that um, you know, for police activity at Patriot Place at that time. Uh I said at that time that, you know, even at those numbers, that wasn't, isn't good enough. We have to get, get better and continue to be more vigilant uh on, on incidents of police um activity at Patriot Place along with um just making sure from, from a standpoint of fire, you know, incidents, we, we're doing the right things. Those were a little less in, within our control as, as maybe some of the police incidents. But um, real quick, what, what I said I would do is, is, is update the, the board, uh once we get to the six-month period for two thousand thirteen versus two thousand twelve. And uh for the period of January first, uh two thousand twelve through June thirtieth, two thousand twelve, we had experienced a hundred and twenty-four police-related incidents at, at Patriot Place. Again, that falls in the line of seventy-five, only seventy-five percent of what the COF report had projected. Through June thirtieth of two thousand thirteen, I'm very pleased to report that we only experienced forty-three such calls. That has represented a sixty-five point three percent drop in police-related incidents year over year. For fire and EMS medical calls, uh we saw also a drop, a thirteen percent drop. But again, uh some of that activity is, is somewhat out of our control as it relates to the healthcare center uh in, in various, you know, medical situations. But again, we're, we're managing it. We're, we're putting less of a burden on the town in terms of, of uh public safety. I talked about some alcohol management programs that we would be, we've been looking at at Patriot Place to continue the vigilance with the licensees. One of those programs that was somewhat unique uh and, and got a lot of support from the, uh from Ted Mahoney from the ABCC. And that was my Safe Ride Home program, where we have contracted with Foxborough Taxi and Veterans Cab to ensure that we always have three cabs onsite on weekend nights at Patriot Place. Since we instituted that program on April twenty-sixth, a hundred and sixty-four guests have taken the opportunity to have safe rides home and use those cabs from Patriot Place. I consider that a, a huge win in terms of people making the right, safe decision, uh in terms of how they, they handle the, the end of their evening at Patriot Place. So I'm very proud of the, uh the restaurants, our valet operator who actually administers the program onsite through their supervision, that, that again, a hundred and sixty-four guests have utilized this program. I talked about a, hiring a consultant uh to work with our licensees on education programs above and beyond the tips and ser- and serve safe programs that are out there. I'm in the process of finalizing that list of consultants down to two and should be announcing who we'll be working with. What my research has shown that with service training and education, the most effective uh area is reinforcement on a regular basis. Currently, a two-to-three-year um, you know, gap between certification is just not enough. And so at Patriot Place, we're going to provide a very unique training program uh for each and every restaurant, staff and operators in between those, those times when they're required to get tips or serve safe certified. Another program that we're very happy to be part of, and that's the Be a Hero, Be a Designated Driver Program. We, we, Patriot Place sort of took the lead uh from the state, Gillette Stadium, who has introduced this program uh last year. And working with the district attorney's office, uh Michael Morrissey, Norfolk County District Attorney, all of the restaurants and licensees at Patriot Place are part of the Hero campaign, providing um free, non-alcoholic beverages to anybody who shows the wrist bracelet that they have signed up to be a hero, to be a, a designated driver. That program is taking it, and we're taking it to a next level, when on October twentieth, we're going to host at Patriot Place in Gillette Stadium, the Be a Hero, Be a Designated Driver Walk, which will provide sort of reinforcement and community awareness of how important making that right decision to be a designated driver. And uh what we've found with the, the Elliott family, uh this Be a Hero campaign comes out of the, the John- And what we've found with the Elliott family, this Be a Hero campaign comes out of the John R. Elliott family's campaign against drunk driving. And it's very simple in that there is a cure for drunk driving. It's a designated driver. So we're sort of using that very simple tactic to make an impression on not only the restaurants at Patriot Place, hopefully the restaurants in the Norfolk County licensees as a whole, but also the community and young people to make that decision. I also want to take a quick minute. Jim Nolan, senior vice president of stadium operations, also wanted me to mention that the stadium, which is the largest tenant at Patriot Place, has also seen a very dramatic drop in alcohol-related incidents over the first seven months of 2013. Specifically, the three recent stadium concerts, Bon Jovi on July 20th and the two Taylor Swift concerts on July 26th and 27th, showed marked improvements when compared to similar concerts or the same concerts in previous years. Bon Jovi concert reported an 86% drop in police-related custody when compared to Bruce Springsteen's show in 2012. We sort of look at those demographics to be very similar. The two Taylor Swift shows reported police custody incidents down 66% when compared to Taylor's two shows in 2011. Jim points to the continued collaboration with Chief O'Leary and Chief Hatfield and their respective departments to deliver top-level service to all stadium guests and allow his food and beverage group to ensure the proper and safe service of alcohol throughout the venue. Jim and the stadium operations have a number of events coming up that they look forward to working closely with the town's public safety officials. Includes Revolution Matches, two country music festival shows later this month, UMass football that begins early next month, international soccer game on September 10th, Brazil versus Portugal, which should be a full stadium event. And of course, the Patriots season, which begins a week from Friday with the first preseason game. The stadium has had successful partnerships with Massachusetts ABCC, as well as Team Coalition, where they have been awarded the Team Coalition Championship Performance Award each of the nine, past last nine years. In the Be a Hero campaign that I mentioned earlier, and working with Norfolk County's district attorney, Michael Morrissey, Jim and the stadium hope to improve on their record-setting 2011 Be a Hero campaign, wherein they signed up 23,580 designated drivers during Patriots home games. So what I wanted to accomplish tonight, and I appreciate the time you have and the lateness of us getting on the agenda, is to say that we're continuing to push. Unlike any retail development in the marketplace, we take this very seriously. I considered the presentation I made back in March to be the, sort of the baseline, and we continue to try to improve upon that baseline. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
John?
No, thank you very much. That's a good overview.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Jenny?
Oh, could you, you mentioned the Be a Hero program and a bracelet. Could you just explain for the townspeople what the Be a Hero program is, please?
Sure. So the Be a Hero program, you either can sign up to become a designated driver at any of the New England Patriots home games. There's signup locations throughout the stadium. And when you do that, you receive a bracelet. You will receive free, non-alcoholic drinks at every Patriots home game. As well as with those bracelets, you go into any restaurant at Patriot Place, you will also be provided with free, non-alcoholic drinks at any time, not just during Patriots games, at any time throughout the year.
Can you sign up also at the individual restaurants?
You can't right now. We're working with the Be a Hero campaign to extend the signup inside the restaurants. And we're going to do a major signup at the October 20th walk. So once we've worked out the mechanics of signing up outside of Gillette Stadium, which we will do at the walk on October 20th, it's really just a matter of them having enough bracelets, providing those to us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. You know, years back when the town voted for Patriots Place and, you know, we gave the liquor licenses and worked towards it, we knew we were gonna have restaurants and entertainment and, you know, there's football games and NCAA games and concerts more than we expected. Five months ago, we did ask these guys to, you know, kind of do a reality check, see where we are, even though you weren't full buildout. First time I've really seen the Cough Report. What's important to understand is when they did these numbers, these are their numbers? When they first came out, we said, well, you know, can we double-check are they our numbers? Chief O'Leary, Chief Hatfield, and I think those are codified, right? Those are...
Yes.
We're talking about the same number, so you're not underestimating and we're quiet in the background.
No.
It is what it is. For them to come back again, what I'm seeing is, you know, there's always gonna be issues when you have bars and entertainment, but I don't see anybody burying the head into the sand and hoping for the best. The programs, one restaurant talking to the other restaurant in bar when patrons come and go. And I think other towns looking to Foxborough and looking to Chief O'Leary on how he's doing stuff and the collaboration is a lot more than I expected a year or two or three ago. So that, and that kind of goes hand in hand on what else is coming down, what other opportunities. I think we have a good foundation for, you know, now that it's been running for a while, the programs are in place and everyone seems to be acknowledging it. Sure, every time there's an incident, it's front page or that, you know, that's what's focused on. But when we have a quiet concert, that doesn't make front pages and that doesn't make the discussion. So the quiet stuff is, I think, what we appreciate, and it's a good opportunity to hear that right now. So thank you.
When we were presented with this information five months ago, I know there was discussion with Chief O'Leary and the town manager to come up with some additional information from the statistics of the, and the impact on the police department. And I know that that's, we haven't had that come forward to us, so, you know, I would just ask that, you know, perhaps that's something we can get follow-up from Chief O'Leary and Bob to look at that also. But again, appreciate the programs and the focus on this, because it is so important to us.
Thank you.
I just want to say I did have a chance to meet with Dan today, and that was one of the things that I had impressed upon him. I think that, you know, I would like to try to see a more cooperative approach rather than these last-minute, we need to get this done because we have a game coming up. And I think Dan understood that. And I think, you know, I mentioned, maybe we have some kind of a monthly meeting with the town manager and one of the selectmen and just where are we at and what can we do to make this work better? And I'd hope that we could have the chief give us some ideas on that as well. So I think this is a good thing, and I'll talk with the chief and maybe set up a meeting through Dan to start that process.
It'd be nice to do them on a Tuesday before a selectman's meeting. Say meet at 5:30 for an hour. That'd be, you know, every month. That'd be more convenient for the board if you sometimes have it that way.
Right, right.
You know. So, but no, great, great discussion. Look forward to more.
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Yes. Thanks.
Okay, we're gonna go to action now. Anything I turn over to John, as I always do?
Okay, action item number one. There's a request by Michael Lancaster of the Foxborough Knights of Columbus to hold the annual Tootsie Roll Drive at the entrances to the Common Saturday, October 12th, 2013, to raise money for handicapped children. Two items to note. One is that this is a game day. The traffic will be coming into town late in the afternoon, so they're not going to be operating after 4 o'clock. So the, when the traffic is building, they'll be winding up their operation.
Yeah, and that side of town, it's Willow Street, and there's no cut-through coming through there as far as traffic.
Well, they're gonna be up around the Common.
This is around the Common.
Which one? Oh, the Tootsie Roll. I was thinking of the bike race, sorry.
Oh, no, no, no. But they recognize that the traffic is gonna be building at that hour, so they're gonna shut down their operation equal 4 o'clock.
Okay, great.
Okay. So I make a motion that we approve the request by Michael Lancaster to hold the annual Tootsie Roll Drive at the road entrances to the Common on Saturday, October 12th, 2013.
Second. This application has two dates, Saturday and Sunday.
Rain date? It shouldn't be two days.
I only have one date on the cover.
No, if you look on the application, Saturday, October 12th, 8:00 a.m. to Wednesday.
Typically, it's Saturday morning only, never on 2.
Sunday, October 13th, 11:00 a.m. to 13:00.
So they're trying to catch the Patriots' traffic.
I talked to Sandra today, and she said that we're gonna wind up all the Patriots' traffic that was building.
Yeah, well, 11 to 3, they're gonna get quite a bit of it.
Right, 11 to 3 on Sunday. But they're also asking for Saturday.
It's always only been on a Saturday.
They usually have it on Saturday. Is this on...
Only Saturday. We've never had it on a Sunday that I know. We got, how much time before this one comes forward?
October.
Yeah, let's, um...
Let's get it next week.
Push that to the 20th.
Yeah, let's get some verification.
Today Sandra didn't mention the second date.
You know, I didn't even see the second date.
It's in the app. So in the past, have they've always done it on a Saturday?
All Saturdays. Everybody, there's only three entities that do it. The baseball, I mean, the Knights of Columbus, this group, and the fireworks, the chaseys and the...
Founders Day.
Founders Day, yeah.
And baseball was denied doing it, Little League baseball, because we didn't want to keep expanding it to everybody many years ago.
The firefighters do it with the multiple disa...
They usually do, yeah, and they usually all do it on a Saturday.
Yeah, so let's get some, I've never seen two dates on one of these. And, you know, the last thing you need is that traffic getting slowed up, because that traffic starts at 10:00 in the morning.
Right, and they go around...
I mean, I'll make a motion to approve the Saturday right now, October 12th.
Yeah, let's do that, and then if they want to come back and make their case for the Sunday as well.
So you want to withdraw your motion?
No, actually, I already made the motion for October 12th, meeting from the 13th.
So you second by Lorraine? All of us in favor? Aye.
And I'll get some clarification on the 13th if they also intend to use that day. We'll put that on as an action item for the 20th?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, item number two. I move that we approve the minutes from June 25th, 2013.
Second.
Any other discussion? All of us in favor? Aye, 5-0, Paul.
Nice job, Diana. These were...
It's a long meeting.
Item three is a request from Susan Collins, the chairperson of the Foxborough Commission on Disability, asking to appoint Andrea Passins to the Disability Commission to a term expiring on May 1st, 2014. So I'll make a motion to appoint Andrea Passins to the Disability Commission to a term expiring May 1st, 2014.
Second.
All's in favor? Aye.
Item four is a request from Bob Cutler, and I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of election workers to a one-year term expiring on September 1st, 2014. And in your package, there's a listing of the election workers.
Second.
Discussion?
Well, there's one, one of the people has moved out of town, Lauren Barnes. She now lives in Mansfield.
Correct, that's correct.
Okay, I'll make a motion with the exception of Lauren Barnes.
Second.
All's in favor? Next.
Item five, I move that we approve the request for a one-day auctioneer's license as a fundraiser for Beth Israel Deaconess Needham Cancer Center and Surgical Pavilion, to be held on November 2nd at Gillette Stadium. This is requested by Meredith Gianotti of Beth Israel Deaconess.
Second.
Any discussion? All of us in favor? 5-0 again.
I move that we approve the request to use a portion of Willow and East Streets in Foxborough as part of the bike course for the Sharon Triathlon to be held on August 11th, 2013. This is a request from Tim Richmond of Max Performance.
Second.
Discussion? All's in favor?
Item number seven, I move that we approve the application for a Class 1 auto license at 3 Phelps Drive with an expiration date of January 1st, 2014. This request comes from Kevin Matthews of the Alliance Rental Group, LLC. And this is an operation, I guess he bought the business, and he currently has a Class 2 auto license, which only allows him to sell used equipment. And he doesn't sell automobiles. He sells motorized equipment like back roads. So this is to have him get a proper license to sell new...
So that's right at the straight-in when you get to Phelps? That's the...
Yeah.
That's one straight-in that's abutting the driving range?
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. This is a second. What discussion? Typically, there's a limited number.
Where is this? Where is...
Right past your building. Before you take your straight-in, the machinery there. Never even hear out of them. It's very quiet there. But isn't there usually a number of total we put on, like the one up the center is four? I mean, there's usually a number of how many cars you can have on a permit for used auto. I don't see one in the application.
Well, I think this is different because it's like construction equipment and stuff like that.
Right, right.
Does he, is that the one right at the turn?
But it's motorized equipment, so it has to have this license.
Right, right.
Right, you see, well, it's a big equipment.
Yeah.
So as you go up the road and then it turns, it's right there. Oh, okay. It's old, oh.
So it's not cars, it's equipment.
It's not cars. It's motorized equipment.
It's equipment, yeah. It's like big, yeah.
Yeah, we had to discuss. Any more discussion?
And that's an industrial park.
Yeah, it's already set up for the facility.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0.
Okay, item eight is a request by the Board of Selectmen, and I'll move that we support House Bill H. 1115, an act relative to the definition of low and moderate income housing.
Second.
Isn't this the second or third time we've done this?
Yeah, this is the letter.
This is the letter. We're approving the letter.
Okay.
Actually, it doesn't, let me read this. That we approve the...
Chairman to sign.
Box to sign.
No, we approve that the chairman will sign the letter, and it's gonna go to Representative Susan Williams Giffitt at the State House.
Second.
More discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay, I'll check, see if that's in my pack, and I'll pull it off.
Oh, could you, oh, I'm sorry. Could you send a copy of this to Representative Barrows and send it to Tim Holtig? Just so they'll both be aware that the town's supporting it.
All right, that's it for action. Take a motion to go into executive session. And before we do go into executive session, we are gonna take a five-minute recess, just so the public does know that. So I entertain a motion, but we will be coming back in.
So moved.
Open session.
To conduct, motion to enter into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, town manager contract, to adjourn from executive session and come back into open session.
I'll second.
All's in favor? Aye, rule call.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Ron? Thank you. Sorry for delay, folks. Welcome back to the Board of Selectmen meeting on the 6th of August. Announcing for the entire board tonight is the Board of Selectmen negotiated an agreement with Kevin Pecos to conclude his last year of employment as the town manager.
Okay. I move that the Board of Selectmen approve and sign the agreement that Kevin Pecos has already signed dated 8/4, 2013.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All's in favor? Aye. Can I get there, Larry? Can I get there?
But I mean, you just voted.
Larry. Okay. As part of the agreement, both parties have agreed to release this joint statement in a copy of the agreement. Okay, and I will now have the clerk read the joint press release.
This is a joint statement of the Board of Selectmen and town manager Kevin Pecos. In late May, the Foxborough Board of Selectmen and town manager Kevin Pecos announced a mutual agreement that his employment with the town would not continue beyond June 30th, 2014, the expiration date in his current employment contract. The board and Mr. Pecos have now reached a written agreement to address the remaining 11 months of his employment. Under the agreement, Mr. Pecos will not continue to hold the position of town manager, but he will be paid his full salary and certain other benefits under his employment contract to perform a limited amount of work consistent with his former duties, with such work to be determined by the board and the acting or interim town manager. The common goal is to ensure that the town's interests in pending matters is fully protected and that there is a smooth transition in the office. The board thanks Mr. Pecos for his service to the town. Mr. Pecos thanks the board and the citizens of Foxborough for the opportunity to serve as its town manager. Robert Cutler, who has been serving as acting town manager since June 24th, 2013, will continue in that capacity until further notice.
Okay. Okay. The Board of Selectmen has also negotiated into, negotiated to enter into an agreement to keep Bob Cutler as acting town manager with a pay adjustment. And the clerk will now...
I'll make two motions.
Two motions, yes, thank you.
I move that we implement a stipend, which will actually be a difference in pay rates from the town clerk position to the acting town manager position. It comes to $1,098 per week.
I'll second that motion.
Any more discussion?
Just a question. Will the second motion be strictly the retro pay?
It will.
Okay, so there'll be no, this is strictly dealing with the salary issue?
Right.
Salary adjustment, all right.
Alls in favor?
I'm going to abstain from this vote, because I believe that we need to address the recruitment process as part of this discussion. So I'll just abstain at this time.
And I will add to that statement, meaning, you know, there will be something to do in the future, but at this moment, we need to calm the waters here a little bit. So that's why I'm going to vote in favor of this. So any more discussion?
Just under discussion, by voting for this does not mean we're ignoring the fact that we've got an acting town manager. We need to move forward to realizing that we need a full-time, permanent town manager. But tonight, I think we need to get through this step first before we go to the next step.
Jenny?
No, I think, Jim, that said it best. We'll get through this, and then as far as recruiting for a, called a regular town manager position, that will come in the near future.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
4-0-1 abstaining. And one more motion, John?
Okay, I move that, given Bob Cutler's service from June 8th through the present timeframe, we are, I move that we make a payment of $6,588 as a retro stipend to Bob Cutler for his services as acting town manager from June 8th till the present time.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just for clarification, I think there was two weeks out of that as well, right?
Well, it was, it's eight weeks, totally lapsed time.
Within that period.
But it really is only going to be for six weeks.
Six weeks, okay.
Great. Any more discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.